This conference will now be recorded.
It is recording. I don't know why I didn't say it.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Port Orford Planning Commission to order. It's 5:35 on May 13, 2025. Whoops. We'll have our little roll call here. Commissioner Lawton, excuse me. Are you online?
Commissioner Lawton here in Reno, Nevada.
Thank you. Commissioner Boydston?
Present.
Commissioner Truini?
Present.
And Commissioner Thielen is present. So we have a quorum. Chair comments. I would like to make, Crystal would like to make an addition to the agenda.
I would like to move five down to six and all after that, and then add five, which is floodplain, up, slap, dash, no net loss. And we will talk about that item.
What did you say?
B-I-O.
Oh.
The B-I-O are caps, and then the up is in small.
Okay.
No, B-I-O and then the P. I don't know. Skip it. It's not.
Floodplain.
Yeah.
I'll go with that. Well, I'd like to welcome our applicant and our new member. Commissioner Truini. And so move the microphone over so that people will be able to hear. So it'll make a recording. That's basically it.
It's good to be here. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Okay, public comments. Are there anyone online or here who'd like to make a public comment on any of the agenda items?
Apologies.
Check. Check. Is that one of them or all? Check. Check.
I think I found it. I think I found it.
Hello?
Check. Mine's. There we go. That's me. Okay, without further ado. Let's move on to discussion items. Item four, letter A, appointment for applications. Stephanie Gomes. So we have an application. Does everyone have a copy of it here? Again, I'd like to welcome you. Thank you for your name out there. I thought, I like to just know a little bit about people. So I'm going to, if anybody would like to share what's up with them. So I'm retired electrician and teacher and builder. And I've been the planning commission chair for a bit. I live here in Port Orford.
I just moved to Port Orford about two years ago, and I'm a retired USGS hydrologist from Flagstaff, Arizona. And I wanted to join the commission to be able to participate with the community.
Sweet.
I'm Jerry Boydston, and this mic is really loud. Moved here about seven years ago, retired contractor. Just enjoy this whole situation of trying to make Port Orford a better livable place.
Commissioner Lawton, would you like to make any comments? Introduction?
Stephanie, I think Stephanie knows me. This is Carol. And Stephanie knows me from the fire department and maybe the emergency preparedness commission as well, but we definitely met. Welcome.
Excellent. Stephanie, would you like to make any comments? Okay, all right. Well, I would entertain a motion to approve Ms. Gomez.
Second.
I just recommending a motion. I'm not making a motion.
I thought you motioned. I moved.
I'll second the motion.
I think we've moved and seconded. Then I'm going to call for a vote if there's no discussion. Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Truini?
Yes.
Commissioner Boydston?
Yep.
Commissioner Thielen, I'm a yes. Congratulations, and thank you so much. Would you care to come sit up here? You haven't been approved by the city council, but we're going to call you ours right now.
Citizen member right now.
Citizen member. Yeah, you won't be able to vote, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. Because we're going to do some training today and.
You're definitely more qualified than me.
Good to know everything we can. So we now have a full commission, which I'm really happy about. Okay, discussion items, the appointment for application. We did that. Planning clearance is approved since last meeting.
Only one. Only one? Okay, there it goes. Only one. It is a building permit for the flagpole lot on Arizona. It is part of the Guy Vernon partition from two years ago. It is on a well that he drilled and installed.
From what partition?
Guy Vernon.
Oh.
The flagpole partition. I think it was the first thing we did when I got here. Or one of the first things.
Is that not on Arizona, or is this out by Paradise Point?
It's at Arizona.
He's done a couple. He did one out there and then he did.
Across from the lake.
On Arizona, yeah, out by. Because the one he did, the flag is on Idaho.
I'm sorry. I think I mean Idaho.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant. I apologize.
I thought so. Okay, thank you. Then we're going to do the floodplain business.
Okay, so in your packets, you have something that looks like this. And Joseph and I didn't really number the pages, but I think it's in that group. Being that you have. Probably at the bottom group.
Can I see what you're holding?
It's at the end of your packet. It's in that last, it's in the last.
I see it. Okay.
No one?
No, it's in the last one that has a paper cut on it. Yeah.
Get my fingers twirled.
Okay, so you see there's a little map of Oregon there. And you see all the colors, all the ones that are tan and have the names of the counties in the tan. And we're one of them down on the coast on the left-hand side. And all of these counties have been hit with a lawsuit by a bunch of environmental agencies, engineers and stuff like that, and I think out of Portland, but I'm not sure. Anyway, that's not the issue. The issue is that this kind of gives us some expectations to do something. So you look on the right-hand side, and we had a couple options. The first bullet, we could prohibit all development within the special flood hazard area, and that's the 100-year floodplain. The second bullet, we could adopt a model ordinance, and we only had like one month or so to do it. So it wasn't even, well, two months, I guess. It wasn't really very possible for us to do that because there's all kinds of notice requirements, and we don't have full staffing working on planning all the time and things like that. Then the third one is use a permit-by-permit approach to analyze effects of development activities and implement mitigation that would achieve no net loss. Because the whole purpose of this lawsuit was so that there would be no net loss of habitat. And they said that Oregon was losing habitat. Now, this whole thing is interesting because I've talked to people in other states, and there's many states that don't even adopt near as strong as Oregon. But still, we're the ones who get this lawsuit. So the city of Port Orford, we took this to the council immediately because by then it was December, and we were supposed to have something in. And the city council agreed to follow the permit-by-permit approach. And so that's where we are right now on a permit-by-permit approach. Now, mostly this isn't a big deal because the city of Port Orford, and I hate to say this because it might bring us luck that we don't want right now, but the city of Port Orford hasn't had a floodplain application. I don't know if we've had one since I've been here. But we probably have, maybe one or something. Now, I also work for the city of Port Orford, though, and Port Orford did the same thing. And wouldn't you know it, they have a permit. They've submitted an application for a permit. So we had to give the fairgrounds a hard go of this to take their little addition to a barn through the permit-by-permit approach. And I'll explain more about that later. I also have, and you don't have it in your packet, but I brought it with me, a resolution of the city council, if anybody wants to see it, where they did the resolution to adopt the permit-by-permit approach so we could turn that in. So I'm just going to set that up here. And if anybody wants it during the meeting or after, you can have it. The, go to the next one, guidance for communities. You have some other papers in there, and they all apply, but these are the ones I'm going to use tonight. So you see down at the bottom of the guidance for communities, we had three options, prohibit all new development. It's the dark stuff down at the bottom. Prohibit all new, adopt a model ordinance right away, or do permit-by-permit. And of course FEMA, this is under FEMA. So then on the next page, I took page three because it talks about, it's called page three, but it's our page two. Because it talks about this permit-by-permit thing, and it talks about what is involved and how to comply with this. And then there's a regional habitat assessment that you may have gotten a copy of. I think you did. I don't know if you did or not. Anyway, it's pretty detailed. You've got it.
Yeah.
So it's, how many pages? Forty pages or something like?
Twenty or thirty.
Thirty-three. And when we got a permit, we gave this to them, applicant. And we said, get an engineer or somebody who does fish studies that can look at the water and determine whether you are doing, causing any net loss by what you do. And that's a real simplification because there's a lot of stuff in here that's very precise. And that's kind of the way we do with, you know, you guys will find that, and you probably already know it. It sounds like you have some experience. But we take the code and we apply it. And we ask people to use the criteria that's in the code when doing an application. If our code isn't up to date, we might say to apply the state law. So now we have this, and we're under this. And FEMA people at one time said, just follow this. So what, the reason I'm bringing this to you is not because we have an application or anything, but I feel like I have a responsibility, Joseph and I do, to inform you of the fact that this is going on. Because one of the things that happens if we screw up our floodplain stuff is, and I brought another paper here, I think, but we could be removed from the ability to have flood insurance in our town. And that would be something, there's probably not too many people who have it, but there's probably some, and it would be very embarrassing to put ourselves in that position where our people couldn't get flood insurance. Now, the situation is that they haven't told us, if you look on this page four, the next thing on this, there's a page four, and there's a timeline there. And right at the bottom, in the tiniest print, it's not at the bottom of the page. It's before the part that says FEMA resources and assistance. And it says, if a community chooses the model ordinance approach and is unable to put it in place by December 1, the community must implement the permit-by-permit or prohibit all development. And then it goes on, and it says, in the special flood hazard, until they are able to implement the model ordinance's approach, which must be implemented by July 31, 2025. And then FEMA sent us some reporting things. Now, the reason I bring this to your position is that there's all kind of controversy about this. Because number one, FEMA is controversial right now, whether they really can be on top of this stuff. They don't have all their staffing in line, and there's a lot of talk. And so we don't really know what we're supposed to do if we're doing permit-by-permit. I mean, you know, in, at times I have thought that we should just adopt something that says we're going to depend on this. And also, you need to understand that this is only for one year. Because supposedly in 2027, 2026, 2027, I believe. Anyway, they're supposed to come out with a whole new system, which may or may not happen. But in the past, when we've done floodplain stuff in Port Orford and all these towns, which was in 2018, by the way, not too long ago, they made us do it word for word, exactly the way they did it. We couldn't even change an A to a number one to fit the format of our code. They said exactly the words they wanted us to have. So whatever we do now, I don't think it's the end. And that's kind of why I'm bringing it to you. I just kind of want to do a CYA, that we're not keeping secrets, but we don't know what we're supposed to do. And we really don't see anything in here that says when we do the permit-by-permit approach, what we're supposed to adopt. And as I look through all the things, Joseph gave you a couple of them. You know, there's some other paperwork things in there that they gave us at a meeting. And we've got a lot of stuff from FEMA, pages and pages and pages. But I haven't seen anything that says what we're supposed to do or adopt if we're supposed to do anything with the permit-by-permit approach. So, you know, I guess this is just to tell you, to get your suggestions and questions, to see if, I mean, the normal way on a code when you do something, and you want to make sure that you do it, you put it into your code. And you say, I mean, we could say something like, is this the city of Port Orford's intent to utilize the floodplain mitigation assessment from FEMA? Now, what worries me about this is, well, this one does say revised 2024, but, oh, draft update. Yeah. And I asked him about that, and they said, oh, no, that's the real thing. Well, if this is the real thing, why does it say that? So, you know, I kind of think that's going to change too. Or maybe it never will change because if they don't have enough staff to do it, they won't have enough staff. So if you have any suggestions, we're willing to listen. If you think we should give the council the same information, just so that we're not hanging out there, tell us. If you, if you want to see the council's resolution, it's right here. It basically says all the wherethes and why we're doing it. And then it says, we're adopting the permit-by-permit approach. So we have this. It's just not into a code or anything. And we didn't, we didn't, oh, here's participation in the NFIP. This is the insurance information. Adopt a resolution of intent to participate and cooperate with FEMA. Adopt and submit a floodplain management ordinance that meets or exceeds the minimum, et cetera. And it goes on and on. And then it says, no resident will be able to purchase a flood insurance policy, you know, if you don't do it right. Existing flood insurance policies will not be renewed, and it goes on in that vein. The, also, on listserv, I went on listserv because the city of Sandy, which is a big city now, was saying all how they were adopting theirs and everything. And then I said, well, what do planners think about this? Does anybody have any information? And nobody responded except her, and she was almost dismissive, like, well, we need to just do what they say. You know, it was, maybe she didn't mean it that way, but that was kind of the way it sounded. And I thought, well, does she know what really, how these things work? And I didn't say anymore. And then the next day, a guy wrote to me from, he's been at Crepe County for quite a while, and he was on listserv, and I don't know if he said it to everybody, but he sent it to me. And he said, I wouldn't touch it with a 10-foot pole. And then we have, I have another thing here, and it's the city of Toledo, which is up near Portland. I believe, isn't it?
Newport.
Newport, yeah, yeah. A small city, though. And their attorney is saying, we're not doing this because FEMA hasn't done what they're supposed to do. They are supposed to adopt an EIS and do all kinds of stuff. And he said, this is not ready. This is not valid. And so I just.
It kind of seems like with the new administration, like you said, things are in flux. So whatever we adopt may.
Not be right anyway.
Or.
Yeah. So what position we're in right now is if somebody comes in to do something, you know, in the floodplain in Port Orford, Joseph and I would say, get somebody who knows what they're doing, a professional that is in this field, and have them follow this to a T. And the way we will evaluate this would be the way we, the way I evaluate, like, geotech studies or something like that. I can do it, not without knowing anything, as long as I can figure out what they're responding to and that they have done it. And then take their recommendations, and we put it back on them. I mean, the city says because of this and this and this, and we have them go check it if they need somebody to check on-the-ground activity and stuff like that, rather than us.
Well, Crystal, I appreciate you bringing this to us. And it sounds like the city's options are really limited. I mean, if we don't have, it looks like if we don't have something by July, if we don't have a code to adopt, if we haven't adopted a code by July, we're on the case-by-case basis. And there's no code to adopt, and we couldn't adopt it this fast anyway.
Correct.
So we're on a case-by-case basis.
And it doesn't say anything to do with the case-by-case basis.
So we just have to do the best we can, given if a situation, I agree. When, if and when a situation comes up, we do the best we can. And maybe by that time, there'll be more information out there for the engineers to look at.
If we're lucky, we don't have to deal with it at all. But I don't like, you know, just having this information and then all of a sudden saying, well, I knew it was a mess.
We can't, it's like so many things that come to us. There's things we can't solve. There's things that's like above our pay grade. You know, we can only do what we can do. I don't think there's anything we could do that would make a difference. But it's good to know.
I mean, if we had an attorney to write a thing, you know, that might help, but.
Would they make it, what would they base it on, though? It doesn't sound like, if there's just a draft.
Yeah, I know.
We can't adopt it, something that's on a draft. I mean, I would think the city would.
So if we kick it down the road, it just becomes case-by-case.
Case-by-case. Do we know what the floodplain area actually is?
Yeah, Joseph.
Is that this map?
Yeah, the map that was surrounding it.
Yeah, but I wouldn't use those maps for a real map. These are good to look at.
They're a good estimate.
Yeah. We have panels that we get from FEMA.
Around the lake?
It's basically around the lake and around the coast.
Because the GIS is probably not kept up as well as always.
That could be a problem.
Is because Hurry County doesn't have, I mean, nobody.
So, Crystal, can I ask you, does, does this, would this include like a 10-foot tsunami or a five-foot tsunami that flooded houses?
This is what we get for, I mean, this is a replica.
No, I know. I'm just speaking in general. The houses are low-lying.
Joseph has all the flood maps. I mean, we could bring him to a meeting sometime, and you could look at them. You can see all the parts of town. They come directly from FEMA. These, I think, were put out in 2018. And you should be able to see, but they're not necessarily tsunami maps. They're flood maps.
My question is, does a tsunami count as a flood?
I don't know.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well.
I don't think so.
Because I'm sort of in a tsunami zone, but I'm in the near earthquake zone with the big wave. We are not considered to be in the floodplain. We're close to Garrison Lake down there. And when you look at the floodplain maps around Garrison Lake, they have, we're out of the floodplain. So we didn't have to get insurance.
So they're not counting a tsunami, basically is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
That's kind of what I thought, but.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
With the lack of a city attorney's opinion, would it be best to kind of CYA, in a sense? As a commission, there's a requirement that we do something by July, right? Adopt something that we can't do, so that the city can't do because there's some uncertainties, and FEMA hasn't done the work. So having that kind of codified, in a sense.
Well, I think we could, and this was kind of where I was going at one time until somebody else told me I wouldn't do that. But maybe I would, would be to, we're going to be adopting probably some things coming up here that we've been working on for a long time, a housing grant. And it's a perfect time without having to have a bunch of other hearings. If we wanted to slip something in that said, during this interim period, or due to, and we just name what this is. And then we say, the city of Port Orford will be following the permit-by-permit, you know, and that we will base it on this because this is the information that we have. And that seems to me like that would be a CYA. But if the council didn't want to do that, they could even do that by resolution. You know, something that says that we recognize that there's stuff we're supposed to be doing, but we don't, we don't quite know what to do right now, or it's not ready.
In case something comes back later at a future date, like from these environmental groups or whatever, we've showed that we, as a city.
That's what I would like to do.
That's what I would recommend.
I just feel like doing, putting, and probably it could be another resolution so that, because some of the cities said, well, we're just backing ourselves into a corner because they're adopting something, and then they don't even know if it's going to be right, and then there's going to have to be another thing. So.
I think that's a good point, and I think it's a squeaky-clean approach. And we also have a super busy city council that's already dealing with a huge load. And this already is a city council resolution. Resolution of the city council, the city of Port Orford, adopting a FEMA permit-by-permit pre-implementation compliance measure. I think, I think that covers us until July 31. And then July 31, it automatically kicks into.
Case-by-case.
The same thing.
Or we could even have them add this.
I don't, I think we leave, I don't think we bother them. I think they've got enough on their mind. I mean, I'm just speaking real-world. Joseph, do you have an opinion on that?
I was, I can bring it up during my staff, you know, reporter staff comments at the city council meeting. But I wouldn't take this to the city council as a formal item until, until July at the earliest, just because we're in the budget cycle right now. So the city council is already going to be having a couple extra meetings between now and June. So they have quite a few things going on.
Yeah, it's not needed till July.
Yeah.
Till that July date.
And the other thing is, if they did want to add something to that, and just say that we're utilizing. And the other thing is, if they did want to add something to that, and just say that we're utilizing FEMA's
Yeah.
publication, most current publication.
Then applicants, if they, if they come, there is an applicant, then they know a process, it's established, even though there's uncertainty at the federal level, we've established this is what we're doing, so then they know what to do legally.
So, yeah, exactly. If we get an applicant in, I would basically just refer them to the document that Crystal's showing you with the forested picture at the front, um, and say that that's what FEMA currently has as the standard, and that's what we're using as permit by permit. Um, if this goes to the city council with no new updates from FEMA, uh, and by July, uh, we might update the resolution to basically refer specifically to that document. Um, so that way, we can refer people to the correct documentation.
I feel better just for bringing it up here because it's like...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I...
I don't like this stuff that's swirling around, and nobody understands why.
I appreciate that you've done this because I have not really gotten into it enough to know what's up, but now I know what's up, so that's good.
Thank you.
Plus, at the very least, you know, this might be a situation of you don't need to run faster than the bear, you need to run faster than your friend. And as long as we show that we're trying to be compliant, and other cities aren't even trying to be compliant, it'll probably keep us, you know, insured. And now we can say that because this planning commission has formally seen this as an agenda item.
Give us time.
Yeah, or give us time to come into compliance. Thank you, Crystal.
Okay.
Okay, is that it?
For the floodplain.
All right, thank you. All right.
And I wanted it in the minutes that we considered this.
Yeah, we did, we considered it, I think. Uh, planning commission, other business, city planner comments. No, we're not ready for that, we're going to go with...
Planning Commission training.
Planning Commission training, that's where we're at. Yes. So you have some remarks, and I have some remarks too.
We have a PowerPoint up here that Joseph is pulling up. I hope Carol can see it, she can see it, right?
I am sharing my screen, so, uh, Commissioner, can you please confirm that you can see it?
Yes, I see it, thank you. Okay, for some reason, the role of the planning commissioner doesn't show up at the top, but that's the header, the role of the planning commissioner. And, um, as we move into this, I would, I would just like to say that, um, I'm really an antique, I've been around here since Oregon adopted their land use planning goals, which are the whole basis of all that we do now. And, um, formulate, you know, we have two documents that are the basis of our codes. And one, and I don't know if you have it in your notebooks, is the, um, comprehensive plan.
It's not in the notebook.
Okay, it's online. The city of Port Orford has it on their website. And that is the basic one, it's more like a visionary document that, um, kind of tells where we want to go, but it doesn't tell how. And that's used a lot for, um, getting grants when we want to do something, when we're looking at a rezone or something for a certain use that somebody wants, or they've submitted, we can go to our comp plan and see, was this an envisioned use at the time that the comp plan was done? So it's a good thing, and comp plans are nice to have, and they're required by the state of Oregon and acknowledged by the state of Oregon. So I'm going to give a little overview here. So, um, I just do this, um, 20-page thing, and we talk about it. This is kind of supposed to be interactive, and I think that, I think that's the best thing. And if you can go to this, go back to the overview, we're going to go through it. Uh, the history of the statewide planning role began in the 70s, and every city and county in the state of Oregon is required to have acknowledged plans, and acknowledged means that you turn them into DLCD and at the time that you're doing them the first time. And then, um, they acknowledge them or send them back to be worked on more. And that went on a lot in the 70s, mid-70s to the early 80s. Some of the counties took 10 or 12 years doing that. The cities took more like 3 to 5. And we gathered information, you know, at the time, there was no internet. So, um, when, if we wanted to know the status of things, people were finding a lot of data, and comp plans were this thick because there were a lot of, um, information that came from a lot of places to try to figure out what the population was, how it had changed over time, to try to figure out, um, the housing status, all these things that we have to know to base a plan on. Now, you can find a lot of those things on the internet if you look at the state agencies and things like that.
I know, I know we went through the DLCD with our housing, new housing ordinance. Where are they located?
The statewide planning goals are... Something's scraping, but I don't know if it's you, but anyway, the statewide planning goals can be found on the Department of Land Conservation and Development called DLCD website.
Right, but where is the office?
The DLCD office is in Salem.
Okay.
Well, there's a, there's a couple, there's one in Portland, too.
But we usually go through the one in Salem, I believe, correct?
Well, the one in Salem is the official one, and then the coastal management program, which may be curtailed, is going to be curtailed, uh, is out of Portland, and that's been our main guidance, has come from the coastal management program because they gave money to cities on the coast to keep things in line and keep things going, and they gave training to, which Joseph and I have attended, to, uh, make sure that we know how they want things done, and what the new things are, and where to find the maps, and what we need, and what other cities are doing and things. But cities in the valley don't have that. If they want to have communications and things, they have to set it up with each other. But I think that's maybe the way we're going to be too, because they're not giving, giving out for the first time in 40-some years coastal management money at the same level anymore. They're even talking about curtailing NOAA, which is the, well, there's a lot of predictions and things like that. So does that answer everybody's questions off that page?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions you have or comments you have are welcome, this is interactive. Okay, we'll go to the next page. Here's the regulatory framework, these are the statewide planning goals, there's 19 of them. The, um, only, see, as you go down, you have citizen involvement as number one. We're expected to have that. And we do. Land use planning, which is an overall for the land use. Agricultural lands, forest lands, which don't apply in the city of Port Orford, anyway. Natural resources, air, water, and land quality. Natural hazards, recreational needs, economic development, housing, public facilities, transportation, energy conservation, urbanization. Willamette Va, Willamette Greenway, which doesn't apply to us, that's in the Willamette Valley, along the, um, rivers, like in Salem and things like that. Then the last four are coastal goals only. Estuarine resources, which applies to our, uh, lakes and things that are coastal lakes around here also. Coastal shorelands. There's a 50-foot shoreline from the beaches required in Oregon, and we know it's out there, and we kind of know where it is, but if people are going to develop in these coastal areas, they have to put that on a site plan map so that we know that we're not encroaching on the shorelands. So shorelands, these are technical shorelands, not just like what you see out there on the beaches. And then beaches and dunes, and ocean resources, this is the newest one, which, um, deals with oh, marine, marine science, things out in the ocean and things like that. What do they call those? The, um, marine... Marine, I know that you know, because, uh, we, there was a big deal about them a few years ago, and every coastal area had to say whether they were going to take, it was kind of like a marine sanctuary or something out in the coast. I can't think of the name of it, though. But that's what that is. Are there any, uh, so then, these are the laws that apply on the left-hand side. Oregon revised statutes, Oregon administrative rules. Case law, local comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, and other approved local plans are also oftentimes adopted by the council. And if we're using them as a basis, like a wastewater plan or something like that, is considered part of our comprehensive plan if we are relying on it for information. In most cases, we do, because that's how water systems and wastewater systems and road networks apply. We don't have a lot of the extra planning documents that the state requires for the larger cities. There's all kinds of, there's economic plans, and everybody does it in a precise way that they say, that's through the administrative rules. There's transportation systems plans, which, uh, Port Orford did one at one time before I was here, and it never got adopted for some various reasons. But, um, you know, a lot of times, we don't miss them, because for a city our size that isn't getting a lot of, um, growth, you can spend a lot of time just adopting and updating plans and never use them. And I even see that in some of the bigger cities, it's like, again, did we ever use this? And sometimes I think that they spend more time on plans than using the plans, and that seems a little wasteful to me, but no one asks me, so... Okay, we can go on. So we have to make, all of our stuff has to fit. Like, the top ones, the Oregon revised statutes, Oregon administrative rules, there's some of those that apply to us. And case law, we try to keep up on it so that, you know, if something changes, we know what the issue is before it actually goes into law. And that's why I try to keep up with what's going on in the state, there's, um, annual legislative reviews and things now online, but just trying to keep up with what we're supposed to be doing. So the FEMA thing would be a state and federal agency requirement that came out of case law. And we don't quite know what the requirement is yet. Hey, Joseph. So, um, you're the planning commission, and you do two kinds of planning. Long range and implementing existing plans, like, um, making decisions about permits and things like that. So the long range would be things like developing an ordinance, and, um, the other ones are more the daily work. We've been a little slow lately because we have a water curtailment right now, and so people aren't building as much. In past years, we had about one application each month, and sometimes two or three. And that has kind of dwindled down now because we just can't be assure water. And then people are big, digging wells, and they're not sure they want to do that, we're not, I'm not sure the town feels like that's the best thing if we don't know what's happening underground. But, um, we have been permitting them. So the staff, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, you go ahead, I have a question on city council.
On the bottom, yeah, say it.
Well, um, so which kinds of land use actions would the city council not have?
Well, the city council, they're called PAPAs, P-A-P-A, Papa. Plan, amendment, post-acknowledgement. And they actually say that on, online, Papa. And it's, um, so you amend a plan or you, or your code, and it's post-acknowledgement, because we're in post-acknowledgement. We're all in post-acknowledgement, so... I mean, every city is, and so you can't change the laws, and the, um, the code is law in the city of Port Orford. And so is the comp plan. And you can't change those at the plant, planning commission level. But the other things you can do, so you look at, uh, look up at the top, the second one, implementing the plans. You guys decide on variances.
That wasn't my, no, that's not the question, the question is which, so I was under the impression that all of the planning commission decisions could be appealed to the city council.
They can be appealed, but they don't, see, the one, the only ones that automatically go to the council are if we're changing laws.
So if we have, if we have a land, make a land use decision, it, it's still appealed to the city council? It could still be appealed to...
Could be appealed, right.
So, so everything could be appealed?
The, the city council is the governing body.
Yes, okay, so that's, okay, then that's really not...
And then, and then I don't even have, have up there where it goes after that, which, um,
Luba.
Land Use Board of Appeals we have in Oregon, instead of going directly to the Supreme Court of Oregon. So the Land Use Board of Appeals looks mostly at the processes rather than the content. Because they kind of take the position that a city has a right to interpret its own codes. But if you make a mistake on process, you don't get the notices outright, or you, you don't, um, do something in your code that you say, they send it back for you to deal with it. So it can go above the Land Use Board of Appeals to the Oregon courts. But most of them don't, they, they just get sent back. We've been lucky, ever since I've been here, we haven't had anything sent back for us to fix. We've gone to Luba, I would say about only three or four times. We had a full-time attorney that came to our meetings, and she was very careful, and I'm pretty careful myself, and, um, Joseph is careful, and we're trying not to go to Luba, we don't want to. But, um, you know, if you do, it's a paperwork nightmare. Because you have to put in everything that's happened for that case all along, and it, it's quite a, quite a thing. So does that, that answer?
Thank you.
But every, every zone change or amendment goes to the city council automatically after us, so when we talk about recommending, like, this FEMA thing is at the point that actually, it's kind of a change. It's not what we have adopted in our code, and so that's why we got the resolution from the council, there wasn't time, at that time, to come to the planning commission, but, um, yeah, because it's like, whoa, we're not going to be using our code, we're going to be doing a different example of something, so... Okay. So here's more examples of, um, long-range planning. So it was pretty fun in the 70s when we used to do the comprehensive plan because there were no, um, administrative rules and mostly no laws. It was just kind of like, do it the way you think it should be done. And that has been replaced now with lots of detail in laws of what we're supposed to be doing that even go down to, you know, how many days something has to have when you do a notice, how many, just a lot of detail that we have to pay attention to. So what is the planning commission's role? Implement the local plan. Implement the local plan, propose revisions to plans and ordinances, oversee discretionary permits. If it's not discretionary, it probably doesn't come to the Planning Commission. Joseph would be able to do it in the office, or Joseph and I might do it. So the ones that aren't discretionary are, like, there's a certain simple partitioning. They can, they're allowed to do it. It needs a surveyor to draw it up. It has black and white rules for how it's done. And then Joseph and I oversee those. We don't bring them to the Planning Commission. But if they have wetlands, they have flood lane, they have geotech issues, you know, like slopes and things where you have to have a study done, then we come to the Planning Commission to oversee that. And like I was saying earlier, I don't know if I ever finished it. But like, this would be a checklist-type thing to me. The only way we could judge this if this came in is the same way we do the geotech ones. To say, did they do it? Did they address this? And if they addressed it, and then they have their own recommendations and everything at the end, we accept that, and that puts it back on the specialist to know what he's doing, or she. So we do findings for everything that we adopt. We adopt a, you know, if we adopt a conditional use permit, we do findings of why we're doing it, what we're doing, and the reasoning behind that, and how it fits the laws and the criteria that we have. We also have to follow the rules for public meetings. Our chair here has a structured program when we have public hearings of how we do that and what we say. Because all of that is appealable to Luba. And of course, the last one. The Planning Commission is expected to be ethical and treat the public with respect. And we have, we'll talk a little bit about conflict of interest and stuff like that later. Anybody have any comments on this, or experiences that you've run into and other things that are similar, probably?
Did a few variances a few times.
I bet, yeah. And variances are kind of, kind of the fun part of planning. Yeah.
Want to build one foot closer because this guy's one foot closer, or one foot further apart because this guy's too close, or?
Your background is in building, right?
Right.
Yeah. And it's great to have different people. Carol, you know, has specialty that she's always bringing ideas to us because she works with the fire department and different things like that. You're on the fire commission board, right? Maybe she?
No, no, not on the board. That's separate. I'm an emergency responder.
Thank you. And what do you do as an emergency responder?
Well, respond to medical emergencies. The only thing I don't do is structure fires. But then I'm trained in everything, whether it's medical or structure or wildland fire, which is really interesting and invaluable.
Thank you. Okay, we, we can move on to the next one.
This is the next one?
This is the? Oh, this is the next one. Okay, I wondered why it had the heading on it. Types of land use decisions, legislative. So legislative is where you have a zone change or something like that. Where you're doing something for the whole city, not for an individual applicant. An applicant can ask for a legislative change, but it will apply to more than just them. So it could be a zone change for a whole section of town, a change that affects everybody due to a change in state law. The scope is broad. You have to do newspaper notices and public hearings at multiple levels. And you can talk to people about that. You're going to find that there's a lot of these you're not supposed to talk to anybody about. Because when you're acting as the judge and jury, you're not supposed to be talking to the applicant or the public about your opinions or listening to them when you're going to hear it at a meeting. And that's part of the Oregon thing of, everything should come out at the meeting, not people in the background. I mean, you can't stop the citizens from talking to each other. And we don't have any rules that say that. But there, but you're not, you don't want to be part of them. Because you are supposed to keep yourself pure until you hear both sides at the meeting. So we, I think we have some more about that.
So if somebody comes up to you at the grocery store to talk about something, you tell them you're not allowed to talk about it until a meeting?
Yes, or listen about it, but not on a legislative one. Like we're doing legislative ones right now. And you can talk to anybody, and the council can talk to anybody. But when it's a private permit, yeah.
Crystal, can we go ahead and visit a site that we're discussing as long as we're not talking to the parties involved?
Oh, okay, so you're, well, that's a, that's a good question. Because it kind of depends on how much you visit. You don't want to get yourself into a box or appearing to have a, an opinion with one side or something.
Well, when, when I went over to the RV park that was being built over on Medrona, it really helps to see it in person rather than try and figure it out on tape.
Oh, you can go look at it. Yeah, it's good to look at it, and it's good to see where it is. You probably don't want to go on to the property without authorization. But you can go, you can go see where it is and see what it is. But you don't want to have the owner or the neighbor talking to you about what they think.
And then, well, why would, just ask them to come to the Planning Commission meeting with regard to it and talk to everybody about their concerns? I would think that's the approach.
Yeah, correct.
And then, how about Joseph? Does he?
You can talk to Joseph or me.
No, I mean, does he have flexibility to go on his own to look at these individual sites as well?
I think he does. I think?
Not that he has time, but if he did.
It depends on what the city has in their insurance and what they want him to do. Some, some cities expect that, and the public expects that. And sometimes you just don't do it unless you have an okay. I'm sure that Public Works does do it. But I don't know if you, I don't know if you would want to just, I don't know.
Well?
I probably don't have the answer.
Kind of like when they put the bottle drop in, and I think everybody went by to look and see where it was going to go and what they felt like might be the best spot for it, and then we could talk about it here. We didn't really talk about it with somebody and say, I don't like this spot.
Yeah.
Somebody going to the store, you wouldn't be going, eh, I don't like that spot. I want it over here. That's not, it's not public information at that point.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and you don't want to commit until you've heard everything.
Right.
Right.
And I think as far as Joseph's concerned, he's not a voting member of this commission. So anything he, he's actually paid to get information.
And, and the staff, you'll see it on here later, the staff can talk to anybody. We can give out information, we can, they can come look at information. They can talk to us, they can tell us what they think. We can even tell them what we think as long as we're basing it on the codes and it's not just, you know, something we dreamed up, which we shouldn't be doing anyway. Okay, so this is the same one, right?
Mm-hmm.
We can move, yeah.
All right.
So quasi-judicial ones are the ones where somebody comes in for something, like you were talking about variances, conditional use permits. Maybe a zone change if it just applies to a single property or a couple owners. Subdivision proposal. There's a number of rules about the public hearing and who can speak when. And, you know, everybody's limited to a certain amount of time. And Planning Commission members have to state, if they think they have a bias, it's okay to state it and say that. It's good to say that. Well, I have a bias against?
Like if it's in your neighborhood, for example?
Yeah, and especially if it's in your neighborhood, yeah. And conflict of interest is a little bit deeper. It's like, I think we'll, we'll have a slide on that.
Joseph?
No, if, never mind, if we're going to have a slide on it, I was just going to talk a little bit about conflict of interest. But if we have a slide on it, then we can hold off till then.
Okay, let's go to the next one then. So here's the administrative, the staff rule. Talk to the public, provide information to the applicant before they file, provide notices to the newspaper, follow up with state and county agencies or organizations that may have concerns, provide a written report, a staff report. That's part of the Oregon laws. Everybody has to have a staff report that lays out facts and information that we have. Make it available to the public seven days ahead of the meeting. Provide information to all parties as a professional liaison. Send out decision notices, follow the rules, and sign zoning clearance letters to allow building permits. That Joseph does that. Rating permits or other permits that are allowed by the zoning or that have been approved by the Planning Commission.
Administrative, that's administrative.
Him or me, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the citizens have rights. They have the opportunity to be heard, the opportunity to present and rebut evidence, the right to an impartial hearing with decision-makers, having no ex parte contact, or as follows. Ex parte contact is to be placed in the record. Ex parte contact has to be announced and explained at a meeting. They have a right to findings of fact for any decision that we make. Why did we make it? What's it based on? Right to a record of the proceedings, which is the minutes. And I think that this isn't the ex parte contact one, though. So we can get, we can go on unless somebody has. So the basis of the decision is based upon criteria in the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance. So a staff report comes, and it has, as much as we can get, all the code references that apply to the case. And we have sample findings. But your job is not to always follow our findings. You can add to them, you can change them. You're the decision-makers. And you can base some of your opinions on what people tell you at the meeting. If you believe them to be true, or you think that that's good information, you can add that to the findings. And it may, you know, sometimes it's, you say, well, I don't agree with what Crystal or Joseph wrote here because of this. And then you put it, try to put it in a finding order and say, so my finding is that this is true. And then you say what you think is true. And that, that goes through all the, you know, that's the process of all the applications and things like that. So to do a finding, you, it's the last thing on that last slide. Oh, it's right here, too. Okay. So findings of fact, you take the criteria. And in this case, the example is to allow the use. There shall be no, an assurance that the property is not subject to landslides. So the example, you could, you can take an expert opinion and say that that's part of your findings. Or you could, you can take a, you know, a personal opinion that somebody has if they have reason that you think makes sense, you know? Everybody has a piece of the information. Any, any further discussion of findings? More about findings, back. So you take the legal standards and criteria, weigh the criteria with the facts to make findings. If some criteria are not applicable statewide, and then say what you think the findings should be. And we have time for all this to happen. I mean, it's not like you have to remember this. There's a time when we're going through the findings, and you guys can say, wait, I don't, I don't agree with this, you know, or something. Or you can say, I would like to add some more to this. And your own opinions can be part of the findings. But you want to be precise about what, why, and what when you do that. So I kind of like to do findings myself. Because when you're all done with a report, the findings that you have made should add up to what your decision is going to be. And it's, it's the only thing mathematical that I like, really, to take words and see if you can make them add up. So we can move on. So the public hearing. So our chair here will tell the audience how the hearing is going to be conducted, how the decision will be made, what constitutes relevant testimony, which basically means, you know, don't get all emotional, address the criteria. That's what we're here for. And if there's a bunch of people with different ideas, the chair can take a poll just to kind of see how many people are on this side and this side. And a lot of times, they aren't on any side. They're just kind of wanting to question something or say something. Okay, Joseph. So here's the order of the meeting. The chair opens the hearing, reads the hearing disclosure, asks for declaration of actual or potential conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or personal bias. Then the applicant's testimony goes first. The proponents, if there's people that are for it, they go next. Opponents go next. Neutral testimony can be asked for. The applicant gets to rebut. He paid, he or she pays for the, you know, fee and everything. And so they get that right to defend themselves. The commission deliberates and carries over or closes the hearing and makes a recommendation to the City Council if it's, if it's that kind of a thing. And the notice of the decision goes to all the parties who have participated, if they've spoken. They can't, part of this hearing thing is, they can't appeal it if they don't speak up at the meeting. In other words, they can't just be at the meeting and then decide they're going to appeal it later. They have to say what they think at the meeting. In other words, they can't just be at the meeting and then decide they're going to appeal it later, they have to say what they think at the meeting.
And that's to get it on record.
Get it on the record, correct, absolutely.
Crystal, when the chair asks for declaration of actual or potential conflict of interest, he's asking the commissioners.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, not the public and not the, not the applicant.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, we can. Here's ex parte contact. This is what you were talking about earlier, where you're out looking at the property or something and you're not at the public hearing. And so you try to, you know, keep people at a distance on those things. Some planning commissions have, when things get, I mean, there's some things that are really, get everybody's interest and attention, and sometimes the planning commission almost makes themselves a script when they see like something like that coming, so that you can keep yourself neutral without having to just make it up on the fly. And we can usually tell if something like that is coming ahead. We can, we can tell in the office, you know, Joseph can tell, and I hope he shares it with me. And, and we can kind of make some sample scripts when that, if we see that coming up, which of course you can change however you want, but it's a, just a way. So here's kind of how you can stop the person. You disclose the contact at the hearing. Decide whether you can make an impartial decision. And if you didn't let them go on too long, you probably can. You know, it's not like you can't talk to people at all, you've got to have a friendly demeanor, but you don't want to encourage it. And the planning commission, like that was what I was saying, you can have a formal procedure if you want one, or you feel like you need them. Okay, here's conflict of interest. Joseph, you were gonna say something?
Actually, what I was gonna bring up is pretty well covered here, it's just that technically, conflict of interest is strictly, if there is financial stakes involved, whereas bias is, you know, anything that could potentially influence your outlook. So going back to the example that was brought up before of, you know, construction going up in your neighborhood. Arguably, it could be either, it's definitively at least biased because there's construction going on that's going to affect you one way or the other. And it's arguably a conflict of interest because that construction could influence your property value, which then influences your finances. So I just wanted to, to bring up, you know, that distinction because I didn't see what was on this slide before I rose my hand.
Well, and there was another, I've seen people that say they have a conflict of interest, but they really don't. If you're a planning commissioner, you don't want to just, we don't want you to just go off because it's uncomfortable. I mean, you've got to, you've got to try to figure out how you can present your viewpoint. Even if you know that other people don't agree with it. Or, or maybe, you know, so people would sit it out, have set it out before because they call it a conflict of interest, but it really isn't, they just don't want to get involved. And so we try not to do that, try to keep, keep people from doing that.
And I assume, I mean, when you say neighborhood, so if there's a construction project on my block, that's gonna impact me and potentially the value of my home. In my greater neighborhood, maybe, maybe gets to maybe bias, not conflict of interest.
Yeah.
And then going outside again, like it gets bigger, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Plus, I'd have to double check this, uh, because I'm going off my memory. I believe a conflict of interest doesn't automatically preclude you from voting, you just need to disclose it. And if anyone believes that you're incapable of making an impartial decision, they can basically challenge your impartiality. And then as a commission, you would vote whether or not the commission believes that that particular conflict inhibits your ability to be impartial.
And it's really a, it's kind of a safe harbor for you if, if, if it really is there to have people recognize it.
I wanted to second something you said to Crystal about not recusing yourself because you hold an opinion that's different than everybody else in the room. If we have an opinion, we have an opinion, we can speak our truth. And one of the things that you said if, when I first came on as chair, that when you did a training is, you were looking forward to a few land use hearings where it was all just no, no, no conflict, so that we could get used to doing the process, so that when a big one came up, we could maintain, and that actually happened. So we had, we've had a couple that were very difficult for me, but we just have to just sit back and.
Was that when you were chair?
Well, I was chair also, yeah.
What, what did you do when that?
What did I do? I took deep breaths and I gave space. I didn't rush to, I tried to let everybody talk. And just think it through and even take a break. Like one time I took a break, so we could read some, we could read some documents or something, just to, just to let the energy in the room chill down, because we don't want to go rushing through stuff. That's not, we, you know, the lube is right there waiting for us if we screw up. Yeah. I second your remark.
I just have one more thing to potentially add. You can also always abstain from voting, so if you believe you have a conflict, but it isn't challenged, you can still then voice your opinion during deliberations. And then when it comes to the actual vote, vote to abstain because of your potential conflict, just so that way then, you know, you're letting the voice be heard and you're letting the opinion be heard, but you aren't formally influencing the vote. Just, you know, an idea to throw out there.
Okay, we can go to the next. Okay, clear and objective standards is what we strive for. We don't always reach them, but you know, there are some of those like that in our code, the applicant shall provide adequate parking. Well, everybody has a different idea of what's adequate. So in our code that we're working on right now for housing at the state, they had us go in and do some of that. It was, it was not in stuff that we had just organized, but it was already in the existing code and they saw it. Not that we could, we could have missed it on some, we did too, but, but we try to make them clear and objective. The, they saw some that was already in the code and they told us to change them when we were working on it, which was good. Then, you know, we would change part, no parking on the corner to, no parking within 20 feet. You know, at the corners and stuff like that. So here's another one, these are great old fashioned ones, manufacturing will not be allowed if it does, if it does not, will not be allowed, well, that one's really con, convoluted. Anyway, disturb the neighborhood, well, who decides that, you know, so.
Yeah.
But then this, that's, I don't even think that clear and objective one is very good. Because you would wish you had a way to measure it. Because you really don't, you know, disturb the neighbors, well, that depends on the neighbors, you know? So. Interesting, okay. So this is just a slide that I had, that we used before when we were doing new applications. And we, we have a lot of applications that we need to redo in Port Orford to make them a little bit more pertinent to the particular applications that people can do. But I just took the, mostly those same words and I said, good information is basic for good decisions. Because we start out with, I mean, we don't start out with the detail, we start out with a copy of the deed, we want to know who owns it. They can't come in for an application with something they don't own unless they have a signature from the property owner, and so we didn't used to require deeds, but I think we've gotten pretty, because it's not on our application that we've used for years, but we do require them because then we can see exactly. And there's other things on the deeds that show up, that don't show up other places. They're usually on the assessors' maps, which I like because you can see certain lines and things, and then you look into them to see what they are, and oftentimes they're a easement or something like that. But we try to get that stuff and we try to get the phone and address and names of all the people who participated and we try to put the name of any consultants, engineers, surveyors, architects, right on the front page so that you see who participated in this. And then ask for details of what is proposed, it's good to be looking at the property around it and see how it affects other people. And we have a little bit of improvement to that in our code right now in the works because they, we're, we're saying do a site plan and tell us, you know, what's in the neighborhood. What the ownerships are and what that, whether they're single family houses or, you know, commercial or whatever. We're kind of missing good zoning maps, but we're always working on it.
That's all on the site plan, right? When you submit.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've done quite a, a site plan review process that we didn't have before, yeah.
And it's interesting that there's not a question, I know this is just an example, but something about, is this property in the floodplain since we've been talking about?
Yes, the floodplain, the geotech, all of those things, I think they're on the site plan. They like site plan review, so that, because that site plan is kind of the basis of almost everything. A conditional use permit, anything, you, you should do a site plan. And you, you maybe don't have to do something with everyone, but you should consider, is it there, you know, is there a floodplain there? Yep. Okay, is that the last one?
That is the last one.
Okay. Thank you guys for.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thanks.
Very good.
And you can get more training. DLCD has a program, a lot more detail than this. And you can see it on their website, I believe, if you want. Or if you really wanted it, Wei, who is our DLCD rep for down here, she could come. She's, she always wants to do one, and she would come and do one for us. Probably better in person than online, I think, if she was gonna do it.
All right, thank you, Crystal, and I had just had a couple comments too to make about training of just, as I've wended my own way through the process, things that have kind of helped me to, I mean, I think you've covered probably everything, but starting with the comprehensive plan, which you mentioned, I want to just read the part about citizen involvement in the planning, in the comprehensive plan, which oversees, so there's comprehensive plan, then there's our zoning code, which we follow. And state laws at the very top. So statewide planning goal one is citizen involvement. City goal is to provide opportunities for citizen involvement in all phases of the planning process, that's us.
Is that from our?
This is ours, yeah, this is our comp plan. City policies, this planning commission shall serve as the city's officially recognized committee for citizen involvement. So I, I just can't put that out enough, that I want everybody to know that, come to meetings and get on the board and this is how, this is how you, you know, and we're very receptive, and I made it a point since I've been chair to be really receptive to what everybody has to say. State, statewide planning goal number two, land use planning. The planning commission will review the comprehensive plan goals and policies, the zoning ordinance, and other plans that are relied upon by the city from time to time. The review will help determine where amendments are needed. So, yeah, so we get our heads in this stuff and see if it applies to the, to the town we're living in.
By the way, citizen involvement was my very first planning job. Because I was, I was working at a planning department for the summer and the people were bringing me stuff and it was, they were graduates from U of O, and I didn't like the way, I was an English major and I taught English for several years. And I didn't like, they didn't go together, you know, they were just sort of like, there was no bridge between what they're saying here and what they're saying here and, and no findings really, you know? And, and I was like, finally, I thought, I can't do this, you know, I'm not gonna type this up for them. And I went to the, the, two, there was two planners, a planner and an assistant, and I said, I'm not gonna be doing this job anymore, it's not for me because I'm too critical of people's writing. And they're not following the rules for the English language. And they said, oh, that's fine, we have another job for you, we want you to do citizen involvement, we'll get somebody else at the front desk.
Awesome.
And then I got it.
I got it, I did it for you.
Job, yeah. So it was fun doing citizen involvement and there's many planners in Oregon anyway, that come from U of O. But just like me, they love, and Portland State, they love citizen involvement, they have, they always don't have an idea of how much detail all this other stuff is that Joseph already knows, but they come and they hope that they can just do citizen involvement. That's a very small part of it, even though it's important.
Well, we are citizens, we are citizen involvement. We're not, we're not elected officers, in fact, that came up at the last city council meeting, one of the counselors said, well, you don't have to worry about election, no, I don't, we're just citizens. Which, so we can just say what we want, we can say what we believe, so. Not that, I think the city counselors generally are immune to that too, but it just, it just came up. And I would like to also comment that one thing that I found out, I had a lot of uncertainty about coming to hearings that I wasn't gonna know enough, but the staff here put findings on the papers that we look at, we don't, we don't need to, they have maps, they have all these issues that they've already looked at, geologic hazards and various things that we don't have to even think about. So the things we do think about are kind of like the icing on the cake. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty cool, it's not, so it's not as hard as you think it's gonna be, because they do a lot of work for us.
Is that like when I was growing up and I thought, how will I know when to pay my bills?
Yeah.
And in those days, they used to send you a bill, which a lot of them don't now.
Yeah, right.
You didn't pay.
Good old days. Still does.
Okay, and then the, another document that really got my head straightened out is the Oregon Planning Commissioner Handbook, which you folks have, and you have, I'll get you a copy. You can also look, see it online, you can download it online, but Joseph's gonna make you a copy, a real copy. I've given all my other copies away, but.
Because it's not in here.
It's not in there, no, it's a separate document, came out in 2015 by the state of Oregon to train planning planners.
And, and you know, it says planners' training team down there?
Yeah.
Those are people that I worked with, they were also citizen involvement coordinators.
Oh, there you go. April twenty, twenty fifteen, yeah, so it's, it's a few years old, but it's, that's it. And it is, it really.
I didn't see it.
If you look at chapter two, all the chapters are good. That's not it.
It's not the same one.
No. On page fifteen, there's a section that says, planning commission responsibilities, I wanted to just read a couple things. The role of planning commissions is to develop, maintain and implement the comprehensive plan, to protect the integrity of your community's planning process and to foster the community's long-term interests. So we're basically working for the community, we're the, as I said, we're the interface. And then, and then there's some bullet points here, and I just added a bullet to it. And one of the bullets I added is not show bias, like online. And one of the bullets I added is not show bias like online. Like if you're on Facebook and, and there's a hotel going up and it's going to be a conditional use permit out on it, don't go saying this is a bad idea or this is a good idea because you will lose your sense that you are unbiased person and that will get Luba on us just to take your vote away. So we have to be cool about that. So, so bullet points, understand land use planning, reflect the values of the community. As a volunteer who obviously is committed to your community, you can see or sense what is needed. Use your unique position separate from the elected political process and from the government payroll to articulate low school values. That's the core, I think, of what we do. That's what attracts me to this because it's this kind of in-between thing that we're just people, we're just citizens and we get to, we don't have to go to college to do this. Understand our opportunities and limits of PC authority, so what we can do and what we can't do. Oh, and I wanted to, I'm going to go back to the city council so that, this is in your book. Chapter 2.16 on page 19 is the planning commission. So this is, is, we're chartered. This commission is chartered. So powers and duties. We recommend and make suggestions to the city council and all their public authorities concerning laying out widening, extending, parking, location of streets, sidewalks, boulevards, relief of tracks, traffic congestion, betterment of housing and sanitary conditions, et cetera, et cetera. Basically recommend to the city council, recommend to the city council, study and propose in general such measures as may be advisable for promotion of the public interest, health, moral, safety and convenience, welfare of the city and the area of the urban growth boundary. So that's kind of what we're, we can't just come up with stuff and just pass it. I mean, basically we're, we're working at the city council's bidding, so we're not, we don't just come up with stuff, but.
I want one of these books like this one too.
Okay.
I don't think I've ever had.
Yeah.
I think I had one once, but this.
It goes chapter by chapter. Chapter four, making land use decisions. And there's a really excellent chart in here, kinds of decisions and their characteristics, which you were talking about. Legislative decisions, or anybody can talk, we can talk about it. In fact, we're, I'm going to talk about, I'm going to go to the city council and talk about our zoning proposal to the city council. That's all free game. Then there's, so that's legislative, quasi judicial, which we talked about, that's where we have to be on the QT. We can't talk to anybody. And that's an official hearing with official gavel and a whole thing. And then the ministerial, and that was called administrative on the, on the chart, but ministerial, I like to think ministerial, those are staff decisions. The staff makes a lot of decisions, like if you're going to build a house, you know, they look at the plot plan and they make, it doesn't come to us. And then probably the, the city council is going to adopt.
But we are the appeal body.
But we are the appeal body. Well, that's what I was going to say.
If they, they don't like what Joseph or I is saying and they don't agree with it, they can't appeal our decision.
Right. And some, some decisions will be, I forget now what, what the name of it is, where.
Quasi judicial.
Not quasi judicial.
Legislative.
No. The, the new part we're putting in the code that allows.
Site plan.
Site plan review.
Limited land.
Limited land use decision. So there's a, there's a type of ministerial that can get bumped up to, to us as a hearing. That's the quasi.
We put out a notice that we're making that decision and then if people want to be part of it, they have to appeal it.
Yeah. So I don't know if I made it, made anything any clearer, but there are basically three divisions. There's legislative, quasi judicial and ministerial in-house, those, those kinds of decisions. Anyway, this is a really great book. I recommend that you look, it really helped me to understand.
Are we going to take the quiz?
Oh, my gosh.
You guys all have the quiz, right?
Let's take it.
Yeah. And let's share. Let, just go through and do the answers that you think.
Uh-oh. It's going to get me fired. Joseph, you're supposed to take it too.
I'm not even on the commission yet. I have to take a test.
You're doing the test before you're.
Oh, I don't think I have a copy.
You do.
You do now. Here.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
What? Okay, when you get done, tell us because I think you're probably getting done.
I'm not signing it.
We're going to just talk.
We're going to, no, you're going to go first and you're going to tell us, tell us your answers.
Okay, are, are we?
I'm not done yet, hold on, I'm still.
I don't have to do it.
Are you talking about the zones in our town?
I just get to judge, yeah.
You want the numbers?
Ooh.
The numbers?
The zones?
No. You just write which one is.
It says underlying or overlaying.
Yeah.
You were, oh. I'm not putting numbers.
Oh.
I can put an R1.
Oh, underlying, they're underlying and overlay. Oh, I see, okay. I thought you were supposed to name them.
Yeah, you're like.
Underlying and overlay.
Just rushing through it and then.
Underlying.
Number one, what's number one? Who has the answer?
I put legislative.
I put legislative.
Legislative.
Okay, we got it. Okay, number two.
No.
No.
I said no.
I said no.
Oh, you guys are so smart.
Yep, because it's quasi judicial.
We, we only told you this once and they say it takes seven times. Okay, number three, talking to people at the coffee shop about a new zoning overlay for the tsunami inundation area, no, of town.
I said yes.
Yes.
I said yes.
Hey.
Yeah.
We're on it.
Okay, number four, which can you use in making a finding for a decision?
The requirements of the city ordinances.
That's what I said.
None of the others are.
But I also said something that you observed when you looked at the property.
Or someone said at a public hearing, because you mentioned that we can.
They're all true.
I said all.
I circled all of them.
Of course, this is something you read on the internet.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I read the OARs on the internet.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they can be true if they're, yeah. Okay, number five.
That's a good one.
I said adopt a code that requires it.
What kind of a code?
Requires what?
Requires a garage. How could we require garages for a manufactured home in the Arwin residential district to upgrade the residential neighborhood? And I said, adopt a code that requires it.
For everybody.
Yeah.
For everybody. All stick-built and.
Yeah.
That's what.
Yep.
Mine's a short.
You didn't have those words.
I said extend the code language to include carports or detached garages.
Everybody.
Yeah, for everybody.
Okay, what about the last one? Is it, what is, which is industrial, just call it out.
Under.
Underlying.
Underlying.
Okay, regular zone. Okay, floodplain.
Overlay.
Okay, residential.
Underlying.
Oh, I missed it.
Oh, my God.
Oh, you missed one?
Missed it.
We're taking applications.
I didn't realize what we were supposed to be. Underlying zones and overlines, write your response.
Did you put down five I?
Yeah, I started putting the.
Yeah, that's what I started doing. I had to cross them out.
Sorts of things and then I.
I finally figured it out. Joseph was over here giving me the elbow.
What about neighborhood residential?
C1, R1, R2, natural hazards.
Natural would be underlying.
Neighborhood residential is an overlay zone in Port Orford. They have this one little neighborhood that is less than a block and they wanted their own thing and they came to council and they got.
Oh, this was in 10 MU?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what that is? Oh, that's what they call it? Okay, cool.
It's this little blue thing on the maps. Yeah. And then commercial, yeah, that's a underlying zone. Natural hazards, what are those?
I would say overlay.
An overlay. There's a natural hazards overlay.
Yeah, just so that it can do something on that.
That's when, and then, that's when you need the geotech if it's more than 15%. Yeah. All right, good job.
Did anybody get, did anybody get them all right?
I did.
Well, you don't count.
Close. I missed four.
I didn't get them all right. I didn't understand the last question, so.
You shouldn't be criticizing the person who wrote the, I would, that's the first, I mean, the question.
Okay. I'm going to come back to order here because I'm an order kind of a guy. City planner comments.
I don't think so. We're going through our code with the council now for the housing additions and Joseph's is going to present the floodplain issue a little bit to the council, what's in their minutes and, and if they have any suggestions, you might want to, you might want to tell them, you know, that we have their resolution.
Yeah.
Because some of them maybe weren't here. I mean, it just changes all the time. Yeah. Okay.
That's it?
I.
Joseph.
My comment would be I'd like to, once again, welcome the new commissioners to the commission and thank you for dedicating your time to the city.
Ditto. Planning commission comment.
Did you make the test a little easier next time?
Or at least let us know that we're going to have one.
This is a pop quiz.
For Clement now.
I'm the queen, I get to make.
Okay, I guess I don't have any. Public considerations, anybody online with, or Ms. Gomes, who is still a public member?
I'm not seeing any raised hands or any messages.
Okay. Then future meetings will be June 10th at 5:30, not 3:30. The agenda says 3:30, but it's going to be 5:30. We've been doing 5:30 in the summertime.
It's tentatively scheduled for June 10th. It might need to change depending on some factors, but if that's the case, I'll let the council or the commission know as soon as I'm aware of it.
Okay.
And if we don't have applications or something yet to do, you could decide whether you want to have them.
Okay. Yeah. So we're, I, unless we have something else going on, I wouldn't have a meeting unless there was a good reason to. But I think there might be a good reason.
I, if we were to study these as a group at the meeting, that might be a good reason to take a look at their, our planning commission handbook and all that stuff, not this guy.
You want to run through, go through some more of those things? Are you, are you interested in looking at that deeper?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I would be, I would be totally happy to do that. It's a, it's a really.
Unless nobody else wants to.
Doesn't hurt.
It's, and you know, some of us have enough experience here, I mean, well, obviously, Crystal does, to know which parts are really relevant. Like there's stuff in there like, it's really cool. Like if you, if you find something that the staff has done that's like not the way it is, don't bring it up at the meeting. Send them an email or talk to them. Don't, you know, let's keep our decorum and like.
Right.
Wear real clothes.
When we're at a.
A hearing.
Hearing.
Or even here, I mean, yeah, I mean, let's, we want to keep some, act like adults, civilized people. All right, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. It is now 7:20.